All right, it's going with you.
You ready?
I'm sorry.
Pick up there or pick up broke on. We want to go back.
No, you're good.
All right, can I get motion approval for tonight's agenda?
Absolutely.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a special items. We have a presentation from Missouri local government employees retirement system supplemental evaluation. Staff report. I think Roger is supposed to be here tonight and they are not.
All right.
So you might be skipping that one. All right, women's and two boards and commissions, we have none. Schedule public comments, we have none. Just a reminder that all public comments need to be into the city clerk by the Wednesday before the meeting date. Public hearing, none. Council bill and first reading, council bill number two zero two five dash zero two. In ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement. Liberty Landing North phase one through four.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, for this evening's consideration. For an ordinance to accept the public infrastructure for Liberty Landing North phases one through four. Staff has been working with developers, Martin builders. To complete inspections and address any. Outlying issues, all of the issues that were found during the inspection process have been addressed to the satisfaction of city staff. We are recommending acceptance of Liberty Landing North phases one through four. With exception to the detention basin on lot one seventeen B. The developers have agreed to complete those. There are a few repairs and modifications that need to be completed. However, the timing of the year is not conducive to completing the type of that nature of work within a detention basin. We've spoken with developers about that and they are amenable to completing that work and having it accepted as part of phase five when that comes back before the board.
So they'll be able to do everything they need through one phase through one to four and.
Phase one through four, all the public infrastructure is complete with exception that basin.
Yeah, other than that, so everything's good to go.
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions for staff? Can I get a motion to approve council ball number two zero two five dash zero two? An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a subdivision warranty agreement for Liberty Landing North phase one through four.
Make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All of, all of one, Raden Grant?
Aye.
Alvin Coburn?
Aye.
Alvin Bell?
Aye.
Alvin Wilson?
Aye.
And Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Oh business, ordinance number one four nine eight, ordinance approving the subdivision plant for force part two B. Staff report please.
Uh, we request Mr. Mayor that that be tabled. There were some infrastructure issues that came up in the inspection last case.
All right. Can I get a motion to table? Ordinance number one four nine eight and ordinance approving subdivision plant for force part two B.
Some.
Have a second?
Aye.
Alvin Lewis?
Aye.
Alvin Wilson?
Aye.
Alvin Bell?
Aye.
Alvin Coburn?
Aye.
And Alvin Raden Grant?
Aye.
All right, so that motion is tabled. New business, resolution two zero two five dash five, a resolution to dispose of surplus property backhoe.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. City would like to uh, get your approval for a request to dispose of a second backhoe that is no longer in use. We, we got a new backhoe last year and it is basically sitting and not being used. So we'd like to request that it be disposed and it would go on gov deals.
So we sell it?
Yeah.
Any sort of operational?
Yes, yep.
Dispose sounds like they're getting ready to bury or something.
Yeah, no, it would get some money out of it. Yeah.
Good.
All right. Any questions? Moving on, all right. Can I get a motion to approve resolution two zero two five dash five? A resolution to dispose of surplus property backhoe.
Some.
Can I get a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to reports. Mayor report, last weekend we had the Optimus pancake breakfast. It went very well. If you had an opportunity to come out, we, I think we served over two hundred and fifty attendees. I have something I want to talk to Scott about, about the car. And then Pinto Pony project, can we move forward and get meeting with some of the owners? And get some people on and talk about that. All right. That is my report. Senior administrator report.
Website's been live for a few, what, week and a half now? Haven't really received a whole lot of public feedback on that. I've talked to a number of you about that. We're still working on putting information out there on that website, but so far the, the feedback that we have received has been positive on that new website. Quick update on wastewater treatment. We have received bids back for, for the wastewater treatment plant expansion project. The engineers are still working through verifying and evaluating those bids. There were some discrepancies on a few items like the electrical bids as an example. So they're trying to identify whether or not those discrepancies would disqualify any of the folks that bid on the electrical components. We're also evaluating some different pump options from a costing perspective. So once the engineers have finalized that bid tab, we'll kind of start the next process of evaluating that cost and determining a path to finance on that. I know Shelley mentioned earlier that we'll be having those, those enterprise funds in the latter half of those budget workshops. And that's when we'll really start to get down to the nuts and bolts of the plant expansion, what that proposed cost will look like and how to go about financing that expansion. I think that's all I have for public report and I'll have more for closed session.
All right. Senior administrator report.
I'm sure you all heard, there was an executive order stopping all federal grants. That happened, I think on Thursday. On Friday, after numerous requests, we started working on what that would mean, what that would look like. Nathan, in particular, was working on it later that day. It was announced the president had rescinded his order shortly after a federal judge had issued an injunction. It's our opinion that sitting here today, the grants are going to keep on rolling. The, the White House may change their mind, do something differently. But there was a significant question about what that would do to Ashland and any other city for that matter. But at the moment, it would seem the panic is, has paused if not gone away. So that's my report.
All right.
Public works directors monthly report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, just want to touch on a few highlights regarding the transportation master plan. We completed a kickoff meeting with, on that with Great River Engineering. We should be bringing some stuff to you here shortly. Some status updates, we are working with a local contractor on a curb and gutter project. We're going to be meeting with them tomorrow afternoon, but you're rolling on that. Caspian and Oak Street stormwater projects, we are having bid opening on Wednesday, the eleventh of next week. At that point will be, I doubt that we're going to make it to cutoff on for the next meeting, but we anticipate bringing that back before the board in March. Tap Grant sidewalk trail project, we have completed all of the required documentation at this point and submitted it back to MODAT. They have approved the right of way easement plans. We are waiting on the, them to issue the A date or authorization date, which allows us to work with the landowners to obtain right of way easements. As those landowners are project partners, we do not anticipate any issues in that. Once that's complete, we'll be able to push out for bid in March, hopefully by the beginning of March. One last thing, you may have noticed some signage and channelizers on Ash Street. There was a sewer main project that we anticipated completing during the Christmas break, the holiday break for the school. We ran into some issues with some unknown infrastructure that was discovered in that area. So that project has been delayed and we are hopeful that during the spring break, when we have no school traffic, we need one day to get in there and finish that project up. That's all I have.
Any words on striping? May.
We have received several quotes and I need to sit, sit down with the treasurer at some point this week to go over a budget amendment. And then we can proceed with that purchase. At that time, we would bring it back before the board for authorization of expenditure.
Kind of know it's a little bit of a confusion out here.
Yes.
From the hogs of the law. Thank you, sir. Moving on to water superintendent monthly report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the board, it's business as usual. We, we installed a number of meters. It did slow down during the cold snap. But all in all, we, we were good on, on water. We didn't have any, any major issues. The master plan is underway. We are in contract negotiations with McClure. And we, we are talking the, the numbers right now. Hopefully we can get that situated and, and get that back to you as soon as we can. Also still, still searching and looking for SCADA updates for the well houses and the well towers. We're trying to gather a few numbers just to see where we're at so we can go forward. But other than that, the city staff is still exercising valves. We're moving into Seasons Ridge, kind of trying to do it subdivision at a time, just so we can keep everything straight until we, we finish up our master plan. And still continuing to work with all clear for the lead in copper slip. That is all I got.
Any questions for staff? Moving on. Alvin Raden Grant?
No report.
Alvin Coburn?
Just a reminder that the park board is having their presentation of the park plans on February twenty fourth at six o'clock.
And that will be here in this room?
I'm not sure if it's going to be in this room. Kyle, do you know if it's going to be in this room?
It'll be in this room.
Okay.
Okay, good. Alvin Bell?
No report.
Alvin Wilson?
No report.
And Alvin Lewis?
No report.
All right. Any general comments from the public for all members and staff? See you now? Can I get a motion to vote to go into closed session, present chapter six one zero dash zero two one legal actions of cause of legal litigation involving government body? Can I get a motion? So. And a second?
Second.
A call on the board? Or Alvin Raden Grant?
And our upside. So that's a holding deal. Well, apparently their move is to try. Johnny, are you still silent? Johnny's still silent.
That's it.